I shot the easy fiber, but they were there. So that's why, not to diminish, obviously, what you do, you know that, but I know it.
You're the pain, to be honest. Public works legally and.
Yeah, I know. We have everybody.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna go through them. Are we ready? Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council regular and to be followed by study session agendas for this Tuesday, January twenty one, two thousand and twenty five. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Bokey has been excused. Councilmember Branstetter.
Here.
Councilmember Lorisella.
Here.
Councilmember Pearson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
And Mayor Whalen.
Present.
Have a forum.
Well, thank you very much. Now, if you'd please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance to our nation's flag, we'll proceed with tonight's agenda.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation, under your power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, again, thank you all for coming tonight. And for those of you watching from home, we appreciate your attendance. This is the first of our unique new meeting schedules where tonight is combined both a regular meeting, which is the part you're probably most interested in, followed by a study session on some items that are on the agenda for tonight. So first, though, we start with always the fun part of our evening, which is the proclamation and presentation section of the agenda. And the first item is the Larry Saunders Service Award presentation by the Lakewood Community Foundation Fund. And for this, I'll have Mr. Bob Warfield from the community fund. Please come to the dais there, sir, and proceed with your presentation of the award.
Thank you. Mayor Whalen. City Council, ladies and gentlemen. And Kiwanis, wow, looks like what a crowd. And all the people I haven't met. Good evening, I'm Bob Warfield. He, him. I am privileged to represent the Lakewood Community Foundation Fund tonight, which works in partnership. And you know, a mystery formula to review nominations for the annual Larry Saunders Service Award. We are dependent on help from the Chamber of Commerce, which in this case was Tammy Felner and on the, from the city council to represent the city. And in this occasion was Tristan Lorisella. And from our outfit was Ramona Hinton, who was unable to be here tonight. And we're always dependent gratefully upon the guidance assistance of Brianna Schumacher, without whom everything in Lakewood will fall apart. We all know that. This is the Larry Saunders Service Award. And a word or two about Larry Saunders is appropriate. Some of you probably knew Larry well personally. And certainly if you had some association with the Rotary or the Police Department, hopefully on the best side of that, you had acquaintance as well. Larry was quite a guy. After thirty years of service, he and Sally decided Lakewood would be home for which we're ever grateful. Larry had an extraordinary career, which not only included developing the Lakewood Police Department. And its outstanding presence, present form owes a great deal to his organizational ability. But citing he hadn't had enough of the army during the Iraq War. He jumped on an airplane and went back to Baghdad to help organize a police college, which he served for about fifteen months. And then fortunately came back to us to be with his friends in Lakewood and enjoy his family. And unfortunately, Larry died in with his boots on, running around Lake Wahoop in January twenty sixteen. And for his memory and honor, we've named this award. So we wake each morning in a non-traditional decentralized media environment, almost unimagined twenty years ago. Podcasts have replaced newspapers and social platforms, social conscience. We are challenged daily to step outside of the cloistered shrine to human imagination between our ears. Our windowless view of the universe to engage life. Engaging life, we confirm the importance of each other. The value of connection. We recognize that our village would be two dimensional. A two dimensional world without the depth of organizations like Kiwanis and the extraordinary volunteer spirit of people like Larry Woods, which is to name our two award recipients for tonight. We gather again therefore to recognize these two parties who have collectively and individually distinguished themselves through leadership and service to community. Our first award to Larry Saunders, excuse me, Larry Woods, Jr., whose untiring leadership of city of, excuse me, Lake City Neighborhood Association, following retirement from the Air Force, is legendary. Over more than fifteen years, Larry has served numerous important advisory commissions for our city and for our school district. He's been a strong advocate for youth and worked effectively over time to assure sidewalks and right of way improvements in his community. Larry has shown particular interest in support for public safety, our Lakewood Police Department. The locus of dedication by Larry Saunders, for whom the award, of course, is named. Larry Woods has distinguished himself further as a trusted civilian liaison to investigate incidents of police involved shooting and was instrumental in the outstanding selection of Patrick Smith, our chief of police department currently. Larry Woods has designated communities and schools of Lakewood to receive a grant that accompanies his award. And we're especially pleased tonight to announce a second award. For as long as any can remember, Kiwanis Club of Clover Park has been a beacon of service, a beacon service organization for Lakewood. Through visionary, visionary outreach and imagination can do citizens of Lakewood have been drawn to community service association by Kiwanis Club of Clover Park, embracing their mission to improve the world one child at a time and one community at a time. Without fanfare over years, our Kiwanis Club has improved the world for hundreds of Clover Park children and distinguished Lakewood on the map of great American cities. Underwriting caring kids, caring for kids, it's great to see Diane Formoso. Diane's acquainted with caring for kids. Now, if you have any questions about that, you can ask her. And I should mention Diane Formoso received the first Larry Saunders Service Award in two thousand and seventeen. And she's probably forgotten that by now. She's gotten so many. Anyway. Caring for Kids, along with the charity basketball event, which must be fun for everybody, and the Lakewood Family YMCA, the Lakewood Baseball Club. And we should all be cheering for the Lakewood Baseball Club. And for Springbrook Park. And awards for youth programs through the Clover Park School System. And in addition, they've provided great support for the Emergency Food Network over the years. So with tireless generosity, our Kiwanis recently completed a ninety thousand dollar renovation of the playground at Kiwanis Park, I am told. I haven't been to the playground personally to check it out, but I am sure that they did a great job and that the community there and around appreciated enormously. Kiwanis Club of Clover Park has designated Partners for Parks, the H Barn Project, to receive their thousand dollar grant associated with the award. And joining Mayor Whalen for presentations again tonight, we're delighted and I am honored to welcome back Sally, Mrs. Larry Saunders. So will Mr. Larry Woods? And Kiwanis Club of Clover Park? Come help Larry receive a couple of awards. Mayor Whalen. I don't have a good way to protect this, but this will be available. I'll do one at a time here.
Sure.
However, this works. Here's one for Larry.
Well, Bob, I just want to add my two cents to the auspicious occasion here to honor Larry Woods with the Larry Saunders Service Award. I have known several Larrys in my future and past and present, and you have done an incredible job, Larry, in serving your neighborhood association in such an incredible fashion, providing impeccable timeliness to the meetings, great information sharing, and the utmost of service to that neighborhood. And it's, it's really, it's really wonderful to see. I was thinking up there as I was listening to Bob speak that there's such an inextricable connection between the military community and Lakewood. And it's wonderful to see and it's incredible that folks like you and certainly like Larry Saunders himself left a full career of military service to continue serving your community in the capacity in which you each have served. And for that, we are so thankful. And this particular award says, the City of Lakewood and Lakewood Community Foundation Fund honors Larry Woods with the Larry Saunders Service Award for extraordinary community service to the Lake City Neighborhood Association. This certificate is awarded in grateful appreciation by the city and by the citizens of Lakewood, Washington, this twenty first day of January, two thousand and twenty five. Larry, again, congratulate.
It won't be long. I'm gonna thank you, Mayor Whalen. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Moss and the city council and our city manager. Thank you, John Caulfield. And this, this is important to me for a couple of reasons. Number one is my involvement in the community started with Larry Saunders, individually, personally, and that meant a lot and means a lot. And between him and one of my former pastors, Pastor James Jacobs, that was in the area here in Lakewood as well, had me going forward and stretching out. And I always believe that if you're in the community, wherever you are, you should try to make it better. It's easy to complain about things, but we ought to be able to compliment and do something about things. So I am an advocate for those that want to do things and make things happen as opposed to sit around and complain. And I believe that makes it, we have a better quality of life if we can get that attitude purveyed to others. It makes us as a better community. Like Larry, my, my serving in the community is a calling. It's not just something we just do haphazardly. But Larry did that as a calling. You knew it was a calling in his life. And so I feel the same way. It's a calling. And so I would do it no matter what. But the opportunity to volunteer and support the community is important. So Lake City Neighborhood Association has been around for quite some time. And we've been, me and my wife have been kind of running that for, for quite some time. But it's going to be in good hands. At this point, we're turning it over. We're turning the reins over to Melissa Doughty. Oh, she's, she's recording now. So she'll be, she'll be taking over as the Lake City Neighborhood Association. And when you've been doing it for so long, you know, you need some fresh ideas, some fresh things. And so that's good. It doesn't mean we're going to leave anywhere or change. We will still be committed to this community and serving. There's a scripture in the Bible, it's in Acts twenty and thirty five, and it says, it's more blessed to give than to receive. And I'm a living witness to that. We are. And so I'm thankful for that opportunity, opportunity to serve this community, and we will continue to serve this community. I'd still say what I always say at our church, we're better together. Whatever we're doing, we're better together. Thank you. I'm sorry, I did, I'm remiss in not representing my, my family, church family here. My pastor's here, Pastor Gerald Harvey. And we thank him for his service and a couple of my brothers and friends that are here. My son is here. That's important. And my godson is here. So I want to say thank you to you guys.
You're doing a separate one for Kiwanis, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, my friends from Kiwanis, come on up. Come on up. Quinn is excited. That's a good thing. Quinn's always excited. Well, I just also want to say a brief thank you personally and certainly on behalf of all of us here in the City of Lakewood. Mary Dodsworth often says it best that nothing happens in this city without the dedication of so many hands by so many volunteers. And the service clubs of Lakewood, including Kiwanis tonight for sure, have had many hands that have made great work for all of us here in Lakewood and for so many of the incredible things you've brought to bear here in the city for the benefit of so many people, not just your family. And that's the beautiful thing about the service you provide. So for all the wonderful things you have done and will continue to do, because we're going to hold you accountable to all the wonderful things in the future that you're raising monies for, for the benefit of this community. The City of Lakewood and the Lakewood Community Foundation Fund honors the Kiwanis Club of Clover Park with this Larry Saunders Service Award for extraordinary community service to the City of Lakewood. And we award this certificate in grateful appreciation by the city and the citizens of Lakewood, Washington, here this twenty first day of January, two thousand and twenty five. Again, congratulations, sir. Before your.
As the vice president of the Clover Park Kiwanis, we would like to say thank you for all the support the community does for us. And the Kiwanis, we love all of you. Thank you.
I see a check and I'm never one to turn one down. So come on up and then we'll take a photograph.
Clover Park Kiwanis is very pleased to be able to give our award to a very important cause that we have been helping to support all along. And that's the H Barn Project of Partners for Parks, who are striving to make three and a half million dollars. And little by little, we, and I'm part of that group, are inching up. We're getting there, but we are very happy to present this to them and are sure that it'll be well used in this project that will support the community. Thank you.
So while we all gather around up here, council members. Yes, exactly. So Sally, are you receiving that on behalf of the H Barn Project? Very good. Well, that'll be, you'll be front and center. Always appropriate. Well, now you get an appreciation for why we start with goodwill proclamations and presentations. It gets you in the right mood. Gets you believing in community service and the power of this community. So thank you all for coming tonight. And next we have a presentation by the Lakewood Sister Cities Association. And for this, we'll have Connie Coleman Lackity and James Kim.
Thank you, Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss, and city council members. We started this journey with Gim Hay during COVID, actually. We've always had a relationship with them, but not really very strong. So during COVID, it started to be a little bit stronger. And then we started exchanging delegations back and forth. So this year, well, at the end of, in December, two thousand and twenty three, we actually became sister cities with Gim Hay. And in two thousand and twenty four, in May, the mayor and a few, a couple of the council members and John, the city manager and James and his wife went to Gim Hay for their Gaia Festival. And then during that time, Gim Hay had applied for a special. I guess it's it's a type of a city thing?
It's a cultural thing. It's for their tomly is what they call it. Big graves, right?
Yeah. But anyway, they had to go through a lot of criteria to get that. And so they were having a ceremony and the Sister City Association thought that since the city couldn't go this time, that we would send a representative over there to say, to share our congratulations. So James and his wife came back with a gift for the city. So we'd like to present it to you, Deputy Mayor.
Great.
Who's the mayor?
I mean, I, I'm sorry. Yeah, go on.
Yep. So this is a replica of a traditional Korean musical instrument. I've seen it, but I've not since opened it, so. I'll open it.
James, you're gonna have to show us how to play it.
Yeah. This is a replica.
Okay.
I can't play the real thing either.
Oh, it's beautiful. Can I pull it out?
Beautiful. And they play this at the festival. Yeah, very malleable. Well, fantastic.
Well, I just want to extend my thank you to James and your lovely bride for going to Gim Hay on our behalf this time, because we couldn't make a subsequent festival, but we certainly enjoyed our time together when we were with Gim Hay and its mayor and council members, and they were incredibly gracious. Really, we're supportive of the concept of embracing culture, cultural exchange and economic opportunities between our two nations. And it is a privilege for us to be able to share not only our city and its tradition and cultures, including incredible vibrant volunteerism with Gim Hay, but we also brought back many best practices from our visit in Gim Hay, including how they treat their library systems within their city, how they cater to children and families. We learned so much about public safety initiatives in Gim Hay. And so these cultural exchanges have great value. And for that, I thank you, Connie, for doing so much work on behalf of the Sister City Association for all of us here in Lakewood and certainly for you, James, for your steadfast support and incredible interpretation when we needed it. Thank you. Thank you very much for this. We got a photograph? Let's do a photograph up there. Yeah. So why don't we get a photograph, because this will go back to Gim Hay. We now turn to the public comment section of tonight's agenda. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. Written comments may be submitted in advance to Ms. Brianna Schumacher, our city clerk at 6,000 Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood, or via email to her email address bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to the city council electronically, and for purposes of maintaining a clear and transparent record, we ask the city clerk to read the names who have submitted written comments in advance.
Mayor, the city council received no written comments in advance of this evening's meeting.
Thank you very much. Members of the audience certainly may comment on any items pertaining to city business under this public comment period. Please note that your comments are limited to three minutes per person. We ask that when you approach the podium there, please give your name and your residence of record, and then your three minutes will certainly start. Virtual comments are also welcomed. If you'd like to provide live virtual public comment, please join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling the telephone number 253-215-8782 and enter the meeting ID number And once you enter the room, please use the raise the hand feature to be called upon, and the city clerk and myself will be looking to make sure that we capture everyone who's interested in making public comment. So tonight, I'm going to first call on those who are appearing via Zoom to speak, followed by those who have signed an in-person on the sign-in sheet. And please know if you didn't get a chance to do the sign-in sheet, not a problem. Anyone who would like to come on up and be recognized for a public comment, you're welcome to do so. So first, start with anyone who is appearing via Zoom. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, there are no virtual attendees at this time.
Okay, very good. Then I'll turn to the sign-in sheet. The first individual is Garner Duncan.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members of Lakewood. First off, I want to introduce myself. My name is Garner Duncan. I'm the Vice President of Government Affairs for EZ Fiber. I believe that Mr. Vargas is actually presenting us in the study session following council meeting this evening. I just wanted to introduce myself and introduce my colleagues that have here with me. Eddie Brayu is our Vice President and General Manager of the Pacific Northwest Market located here in, I believe in Tacoma. And then Sean Perry to his right is our Vice President of Engineering. We have a franchise agreement before you guys later this evening, and just want to introduce ourselves, let you know that we are here. If there's any questions, feel free to let us know. We are more than happy to answer any of those questions. So I appreciate everyone's time and look forward to working with you further.
Well, thank you very much for coming. Welcome to Lakewood.
Thank you.
Again, that's the last name on the sign-in sheet to address councillor in the public comment period of tonight's agenda. If you didn't get a chance to do the sign-in sheet, you're more than welcome to come on up to the podium. Give a couple of seconds here. We'll see no further takers. We'll declare the public comment period closed. We'll now turn to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of January 6, 2025. B, motion number 2025-05, authorizing the execution of a construction contract to R.L. Elia Company in the amount of $3,361,777.20 for the South Tacoma Way 88th Street South to North City Limits project. C, motion number 2025-06, authorizing the execution of an operation and maintenance agreement with the Washington State Department of Transportation for the I-5 Gravely-to-Thorn Connector Shared Use Path. D, motion number 2025-07, approving the 2025 Citizen Advisory Board Committee and Commission Work Plans. E, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting minutes of September 24, 2024. And two, Arts Commission meeting minutes of December 2, 2024.
Well, thank you very much. Is there any council member that wishes to remove any of the items for consideration at this time? Mr. Branstadter.
I don't really want to remove an item, but I did want to ask you a question.
Sure.
Because since we reviewed the maintenance and operations agreement with Washdod at our, at a previous meeting, I believe that you attended the Telecom Neighborhood Association meeting, and I am wondering whether there were any insights that came up there with respect to this long-awaited project that quite has to looks different than what it was envisioned five years ago when we were first talking with the community. And so I'm just interested in that, the feedback from you.
Well, great question, Councilmember Branstadter. I think that the members present at the Telecom Neighborhood Association meeting, and I think there were, what, 15 or 20 folks who were there, received presentations on any number of things, including this particular item. And from what I could gather, there weren't a number of questions from the public that I recall, except I think there was a general consensus that this was long-awaited and welcomed to have the connect, the connectivity from Telecom to Maine downtown Lakewood. And so I think folks are looking forward to that. And I do believe there might have been one comment about making sure that there is a full connection all the way along the Interconnector Road down Gravely Lake over to Nianza, so there's safe passage. But I know we're working on that to make sure that that happens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So seeing no interest in removing, whoop, did you have a question? No. Any items from the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to adopt a consent agenda as presented?
Mayor, I move adoption of the consent agenda.
It's been moved by Councilmember Branstadter, second of my Deputy Mayor Moss, that we adopt a consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda has been adopted. So the regular agenda predominantly tonight consists of the reports by the city manager, and given the unique nature of this being our first combined regular and study session, we are going to defer those items included in the reports by the city manager on the study session agenda. And so now I will turn to that now, formally concluding the official business and regular agenda, so to speak, for the regular meeting. Now turning to the study session agenda. The first item for discussion is the review of the EZ Fiber franchise agreement. I assume, Mr. Coffield, this is part and parcel of the city manager's reports, but that'll be at the end of the study session. This is the first item that we're dealing with tonight on the, okay. Got it. We're working through the peculiarities of the combined meeting, so thank you for your indulgence. Mr. Vargas.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Council Members. I'm here to review the EZ Fiber franchise agreement, and I'll be turning to page, well, PDF page 71, your packet tonight, to go over the cover memo here. So do you have a bit of background? EZ Fiber is a telecommunications firm from Houston, Texas. They approached the city last year to enter into a franchise agreement. EZ intends to connect customers to high-speed fiber optic internet in communities all along the I-5 corridor, to include ourselves here in Lakewood. To give a bit of the build-out plan, EZ proposes to build out in two phases, approximately five to six phases with two areas under construction at a time. And these areas should be separated geographically around the city to reduce overwhelming residents. Approximately 26,500 total connections to homes, both for single-family and multifamily units are planned. So a lot of work ahead there. Go over a bit of the process. To go over construction notifications, multiple construction postcards will be sent out approximately two months before construction. This will be followed by door hangers placed on the doors. These hangers will explain what to expect during construction, how to get help if needed, and a promise to restore property. Second door hanger will be provided the day of construction, and where allowable and necessary, lollipop signs will be placed along the path of the fiber cable within neighborhoods. And I did make a point to check up on translations for all of these notifications. You know, coming from Houston, Texas, this firm has experience with translating all their communications in Spanish. I made sure to, you know, point out that we should do the same here in Lakewood, and they agreed, so they'll be working with their marketing firm to ensure that areas that need Spanish translation will, will get them. So to go, and attachment A of your packet tonight also has the door hangers and communications for your review. Moving on to technology, ground-penetrating radar used to pinpoint utility lines such as water sewer and storm drains without needing to cut into the pavement and reduce service interruptions and damages is planned to be used as well. To go over the franchise agreement proper, it is a standard telecommunication franchise agreement that the city developed and actually entered into last year. As you may recall, the light curve of telecommunication franchise, that was before this council. And to put a finer point on things, the pavement degradation fees are included in the franchise agreement, and EZ is aware of the five-year pavement moratorium in the city engineering standards manual. And the franchise agreement info has been included in your packet tonight. And that ends my presentation.
So questions for Mr. Vargas? I have a few, but Councilmember Bell, you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I was wondering, is there a rollout plan for EZ Fiber, like where they're going to be, who's going to get it first, and is it also the entire city within the city limits? Are they going to be getting it all?
To your point about the, within the city limits, the entirety of it, yes. To the first two points, I've not received that information to date.
So when you do get the information from EZ Fiber, could we see that? I would love to know what, like, who gets what first? Because I think that's something that our residents are really going to want to know, the rollout, and when it's going to be coming to them and when it's going to be available. And I know it would, I would assume, I'm guessing it's going to happen in, you know, chunks in different locations. Thank you.
Mr. Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Packing on to what Councilmember Bell asked, is there an overall timeline for rollout of this, or has that not been established yet?
That has not been established yet.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Pearson, and then Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this all underground or some above, some below? How is this all installed?
99% of this is planned to be underground. Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I guess I'm, I'm acknowledging that we have some EZ Fiber here, folks, folks here to be able to go and do that. And I would certainly want if they know the answers to some of our questions rather than having to feed them that. I appreciate if we could get an offer to do that. But I was concerned, first of all, in the information that you provided, Mr. Vargas, about notifications. And the notifications talked a lot about, well, they talked exclusively about notifying property owners and not residents, even though we have a significant percentage of the properties in Lakewood, our rental properties in this, and this is going to serve multifamily as well as single-family units being able to go and do that. So I don't know if there's an alternative process about if you, if you, if you're making in construction notifications and things with the, what seem to be some postcards or actual things being placed at and provided at the residents themselves, that you're going to get a mix of some property owners are going to get notified and, but in, but in other cases that you're, because they're resident, their tenant got notified. And then the converse is true of you're going to have some property owners that somehow got notified because they don't know what the mailing list is constructed or whether it's constructed from property tax records or whether it's constructed from going on off, then you're going to end up with residents who are tenants not getting notified because the property owner was notified. And I'm, that seems to be something where there'd be some real value in having a system to make sure that both are, okay? Or at least if there is, if it's all going to go to a property owner, that there is a responsibility to notify tenants or if it's, and I don't know how you, how you, how you make the requirement for the tenant to then tell the property owner that they got something at their, on their, on their, on their doorknob. So I guess is there, is there a, some clarity around this notification system? It seems like we have a set of three notifications, and then it'll, it'll not be three notifications citywide, but it'll be in each of the districts that are being scheduled for a phase because it's scheduled based on the construction piece to do that. Seems imprecise.
I believe contractually through the franchise agreement, we have not traditionally included communication clauses and how to, you know, roll out plans. Since we do have guests here tonight, perhaps I'd like to call upon a guest from EZ Fiber to explain sort of the, to speak to your point about rolling out and making sure both property owners and renters receive the proper communications.
Good evening. How are you guys tonight? In response to the specific question about communications to property owners versus residents, 99% of our communication is based, directed to the person who is currently occupying the premise. Because of all work is being done in a utility easement or the right-of-way, the notification to the, to the resident is more of a notification of inconvenience that we may be having crews in their yard, so not to startle, not to alarm anyone if they see someone digging, and also to make that promise of when they come home and see dirt in the front yard where there used to be grass or see, you know, disturbed landscaping, that that will 100% be restored. As far as in a multi-tenant situation like an apartment complex or something like that, we do not dig on private property until we have an agreement with the apartment complex owner as, even though being a public utility, we cannot place on private property without that property owner's permission. So in the case of a, a single-family household or a duplex where that work is done in the right-of-way, technically that permission comes from the franchise agreement or the right-of-way agreement, so we'll dig through there. The notification to that resident is more of a, we don't want them to be alarmed that we're coming and not know, because then that's going to generate calls into your office, and we'd rather them know we're coming and know how to get help and how to raise any issues before they bring it to your attention and bog down your, your resources.
So in, in the case of a, of a multifamily unit of however many, but, but up to several dozen apartments, so while I understand you getting your service up to the building, is there some responsibility on the part of the property owner to then extend it to, to get the, the extend it to, to, to get the, the availability of the service into each apartment? Or is that's an effort that you will make based on your agreement with that property owner?
It's, it's a mix of both. We don't put any financial burden on the owner of the apartment complex or multi-dwelling unit. We get it, we basically bring fiber to the right-of-way and then we have a dedicated team who will go in and negotiate access with the property owner to wire each and individual unit. Again, every, every resident has a choice to choose between us or their current provider. So there, no one is forced to change or no one is forced to accept our service. But we do coordinate with the landowner or the property owner to wire those individual units as it is their private property.
So if I could refer back to Councilmember Bell's question, which, which was based on the fact that there are. This, this is, this is an, an area that there hasn't been a lot of competition in Lakewood. A lot of people have had. This is what's available on your block, okay, to be able to go on and do that. But that particularly with respect to people who perhaps are in these multifamily complexes. It makes a difference, difficult to tell them based on the schedule of your work, when the service will actually be available to them. If at all, depending upon what has been decided by doing that. So, so is that? What's your history with having done this elsewhere? And, 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 and is this a dilemma that comes up or not?
We have found that it's probably 50/50 on active multifamily owners. You know, some are very eager to get another option in there because they understand it brings value to their residents. Others are, I wouldn't say reluctant, maybe just less engaged because they don't want to have to, you know, they don't want to go through the change themselves. It's something that we are overly interested in doing multifamily because there's a very large potential customer base in multiple, in multifamily dwellings. In, in some areas, it is a challenge to work with property owners to coordinate the wiring of those. But what we have found is once we get, you know, that first 30%, then it's a domino effect and the residents will start actually asking the property owner, hey, why, why aren't they in here yet? And by then, we've usually made contact with the property owner multiple times. And the residents usually become our best advocates at that point to help us get in there.
And then on an in-between group of properties. How do you handle manufactured mobile home parks? Do you, you know, those, those are rather sizable.
Mobile home parks?
The, 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 the actual units are sort of individualized. But that the, the park itself is, you know, they have, they have, they have some uniqueness about them. Do you run your cable up and down all the streets? So that every mobile home user might, if they chose, be able to connect?
I would tell you that that is our desire. Again, mobile home parks fall into a very similar category as apartment complexes. Very few of them have a public right-of-way or a dedicated utility easement. The same team that works with those multi-dwelling units will approach mobile home parks and basically say, hey, we would like to bring fiber optics in here. Again, we have to follow the, the ruling or the decision of that private property owner. But ideally, we would like to bring fiber to every resident, including the ones in mobile home parks.
And then in Mr. Vargas's presentation, he spoke that your pattern in order to not cause a lot of disruption in a, in a unique area that you, if we're going to divide the city up into in, in, into zones and then work in zones that are remote from each other and then be able to go and do that, but eventually put the whole puzzle together. Is that, is that a correct understanding of what, 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 what was communicated?
I, I would say, yes, we, what we would like to do is build as quickly as we can in any one geographic area. However, in working with multiple cities across the nation, our ability to dig quickly usually is a resource constraint on many cities for locates, for permitting, for, you know, the day-to-day services that you offer to the public and in cities like ourselves. So we will work at the pace of which we can not overwhelm your public services from a permitting and a, a water resource and locating. That said, we'd like to spread out construction in multiple areas. That way, we're not overwhelming one neighborhood with a whole bunch of construction crews. Instead, we might put, you know, five or six on one side of the city, five or six on the other side of the city. That way, we're not impeding traffic or, or causing any sort of, you know, trouble in the community that way.
So.
But ultimately.
Mr. Vargas referenced our, you know, our, our, our moratorium, our five-year moratorium on, on, on cutting up pavement for the first five years after we put it down, other than for emergencies. And, you know, and that, and that, that in our wisdom, we thought that was a good idea. Because we don't, you know, you, 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 you know, it, it, it makes sense to do that. But on the other hand, Lakewood has been aggressive in our, our street and roadway projects. We've got quite a few miles of road that are with, within that five-year window or that in the next two years will will, 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 will be that way. Have you received a map that, that, that essentially tells you where you can't?
We, we have not seen that map yet. We're eager to work with your Public Works and, and basically Permitting Department to start that process. Every city is, is different with requirements and how they would like us to permit. The sooner we can start working with that team, we, we're excited to start. As far as not disturbing existing roads or recently paved roads, that's becoming a very popular law across the nation. Ten years ago, it's, we'd never heard of it. And in the last two or three years, there's, there's a lot of cities doing that. And that's where we've implemented technology like ground penetrating radar or other, you know, other technology to make sure that we can find anything that's in the road without necessarily having to cut the road to find it. So we implement that type of technology to basically help save the roads. Because the last thing we want to do is come up and tear up any infrastructure that you guys spent millions of dollars installing. We'll work very closely with your Public Works Department to make sure that we can avoid any possible street cuts, whether it's five years old or 30 years old.
Okay, so I, I guess I do understand about the ground penetrating radar helping you find things that are already in the road, which sometimes we can't even do that when we're trying to look for stores and, and, and gas lines and things to be able to go and do that. But how much cutting of roads, no matter what their age is, does it take to place your fiber in? Or do you have a way, or that, that, that you sort of tunnel under the road and then thread it through?
Absolutely. So we implement boring technology. Basically, we will horizontal drill about a two and seven, about two and three-quarters hole horizontally, which means that we don't have to, to road cut. The area that most cities require us to road cut is, you know, they've got a water line going underneath the street. And so they want us to daylight that before we cross it. And, and it's really up to the individual municipalities. That's where we really push that ground penetrating radar. Because if we come in and we say, hey, we, we can verify that lines at five feet and we're drilling it, call it two and a half. Then, then we know that we're going to miss it by two and a half feet. Now, if we come in with ground penetrating radar and show, hey, that water line's at three and we want to drill it two and a half. Then either we need to go deeper or possibly daylight it so we don't damage that water line. And that's where we'll commit to work with your Public Works Department on how we work on those on each individual basis.
Well, you know, I, I, well, I appreciate your being here this evening to, to sort of do that. I don't necessarily find technology boring, but I'm not, not, not real versed with it. I have a couple of colleagues on the council that are engineers in their own right. And, and, and so I'm sure, so I'm sure that they, they, they probably understand a lot more and do that. But I, I, I guess that I, that I, that I would tell you that, you know, you're, you're looking to provide a service here in Lakewood that a high percentage of the residents that we have at least are looking for choices. Okay, and, and, and so, you know, I, I, I welcome you, you're willing to include us in your footprint. You know, and, and, and as early as you're going to be able to do that and going on off. So, so thank you. And, Mr. Vargas, thank you for your, for your work at putting all this together. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I have a few follow-up questions. Thanks for coming tonight. So I've never heard of EZ Fiber. I'm glad to meet you and learn a little bit more about the franchise coming to Lakewood. What, what is the estimated sort of level of capital investment you anticipate in Lakewood?
I can tell you across the greater Sea-Tac area, the, the number right now is between 300 and 400 million. As far as Lakewood, it's the home count, it's 20.
Twenty-eight thousand. Six thousand.
I'm going to guess 25,000. Do some rough math in my head real quick.
Yeah, that's good.
I, I would estimate it's going to be between 30 and 55 million.
Great, okay. And as Mr. Branstadter indicated, we don't quite have a sense of the map locations yet. I assume that that'll be worked out with you folks and the Public Works Department, et cetera.
Absolutely. I could show you some maps of what our intended routes are and what we would like to do. But ultimately, when we start working with, with Public Works, it's, it's going to be largely dictated by your, your permitting department.
Certainly is. And I'm sure Mr. Vargas and our Public Works folks will let you know there are some significant road projects on the cusp of design finalization and construction that would be great to get ahead of, right? So you can.
Absolutely.
Get into those, you know, the Nayar project, Mount Tacoma Drive with our new park area over on the other side of the city, Silicon Boulevard, those kinds of things. So those would be great. And my, my last question since it's going to be translated and on doorknockers and whatever lollipops are, I couldn't tell you what that means. But when someone says, gee, it's better internet headed my way, what am I going to tell them that means? What do you mean by better internet? We love competition, but what? So give me the sales pitch. What makes it better internet coming my way?
You want to pick that one? Eddie, Eddie is the, is the general market. I'm the, I'm the engineer guy. I'm going to let Eddie give you the sales pitch.
Yeah, we'll get the linear thinker out of the way and we'll ask for somebody.
It's, it's faster, it's more reliable, it's price guaranteed for life, no hidden fees. So as you've probably seen, the current choices that you have now, every year you see an increment, increase. We have the prices locked in, so that, that's, those are the, the points.
Provide folks' choice, basically, good choices.
And a lot faster speed. We're going to provide up to eight gigs symmetrical speed. I believe in the area, the fastest you have right now is a gig.
I'd have to have the engineer explain what that means to me, just the dumb lawyer.
The, the nerd side of, of symmetrical speeds and faster speeds are, we're, we're building an internet or an internet pipeline for each individual home for not what's available today.
Okay.
But the technology that you haven't seen yet. You know, the NFL is, is working on headsets to where you can sit on your couch, put on a headset and watch the game in 3D in virtual reality. And that's not going to work on traditional, you know, yesterday's internet connection. So beyond the, you know, the price guarantees and the, you know, very competitive price and the just general choice. It's some very fast speeds that today you would be hard pressed to, to tax it or to reach the upper cusp of what it can deliver.
It's not bad for an engineer. Did a good job, man.
Going to hire him on the sales side.
Yeah. So last question, just to clarify. So none of this is going to be on poles right in the right-of-way? We're focused on undergrounding?
We are focused on underground. Most cities across the nation are implementing blue sky initiatives. We assume you guys are as well, whether you've told us or not. The only area where we ever look to go aerial is sometimes there's some significant water crossings or, you know, one-offs where going underneath that, a, a pipeline, something like that. And we'll work with your departments to, and the power company to get permission to go over those. But other than that, we are a, you know, 99, 99 and a half percent underground.
Great.
Company.
All right. Well, thank, oh, Mr. Laura Sella, who is an engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you guys for coming in. I think as my fellow council members have said, competition in the ISP space benefits everybody here, right?
Absolutely.
It helps drive down prices and gives them the options for what they want to do. As you lay things out and, and build out this infrastructure, will everyone have access to the same bandwidth capabilities or is it different depending on which area?
No, we, we plan to do a ubiquitous build there. The only thing that could change that is if technology changes during the middle of our build and we're able to start offering even faster speeds. We'll have to draw that line at some point and stop, and then we'll go back and, and upgrade everybody else. I, I think we're five to six years away from that. But we, you know, if, if they come out with 100-gig internet in two months, we'll, we'll be an early adopter of that. But no, right now it is ubiquitous. Everyone will have access to the same speeds.
All right, great, thank you.
Very good. Well, we appreciate the information. Thank you for bringing it to our attention, Mr. Vargas. And I'm sure we'll be noodling over the proposed franchise agreement soon, right?
Thank you.
What's our timeline for that?
Thank you guys for having us.
Mr. Vargas, do you know where our timeline is?
It is scheduled for council, consideration, authorization at your next regular meeting.
Got it, okay. Very good. Thank you. Any else on that? Well, good.
Thank you.
So next, Mr. Gum is up. We'll have our review of the five-year 2025 to 29 consolidated plan, including the 2025 annual action plan and apparently an analysis of impediments to fair housing.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. I would say, Mr. Mayor, you summed it up. It's a long and winding road, to quote the Beatles, this, this presentation. And before I get going, I will jump in and say, so far, we're at, what, 7:05 and we've gone through two meetings. I'm a fan already.
Isn't it great?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Including public comment.
Including public comment.
Right.
So today I wanted to provide you with a kind of a general overview, kind of a 30,000-foot level. With me is the city's consultant, James Galilin, who's with J Quad, who will follow up and kind of go into details and, and kind of delve into what the five-year plan is, how, how it works, where we're going and, and kind of where they're at with Matrix so far, with what they've done for research for us. So with that, kind of bring you guys up to speed with where we are. So the, the five-year plan is part of a HUD requirement for funding allocations for CDBG and home funding. We have to do them every five years. We're in the last year of the current five-year cycle, getting ready to start the next. So we're kind of closing one year out and moving into the next. So this, the one we're looking at right now would be the 2025 to 2029 five-year plan. Components of the five-year plan include citizen outreach and participation, which is kind of where we're at right now. It includes housing and homeless needs assessment, housing market analysis, assessment of economic and employment conditions, assessment of available resources. Those are the things that J Quad is working with us right now, kind of going through the demographics of the city, kind of seeing what, what's out there, what, what we've been doing, and what the need is in the community. And the other two parts would be the five-year strategic plan and the one-year annual action plan. So the, the five-year strategic plan is kind of a, what I would say, the best way to, to look at it is, it's a broad document. It's supposed to be setting up where you're going over the next five years. And you want to set it up reasonably broad so you can cover an array of activities. You wouldn't want to, technically you could, but you wouldn't want to make it a very, very narrow, specific document. giving you one or two, maybe three projects you're doing. So as you all know, I mean, you start with a plan of action and things happen in a five year cycle. I mean, you could have an emergency declaration. There's all kinds of things that happen. And you want to give yourself the option to address those issues. So you're basically laying a broad blanket to do that, should that happen, with the underlying general policies and procedures that are getting you and goals and objectives to where you want to be at the end of that five year cycle. So the two, again, the two funding sources that we're looking at are CDBG and home. The process that would be involved in this five year plan would also be an annual action plan that would address those CDBG and home funds. So in the twenty twenty five cycle, the first year, we would be looking to have about five hundred and twenty five million in allocation of CDBG and about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in home funds. Those would be addressed as part of the one year plan at the annual action plan. And again, this is kind of a broad and winding road. So it starts with the citizen and public outreach. And it starts with kind of a long process. We contracted with J Quad to help the city do this and go through this process in September. As we move forward, it comes back to council's review and approval, the five year draft document and twenty twenty five annual action plan. It comes back to council on March seventeenth for a review. It has a public hearing on April twenty first. There's a thirty day comment period that runs April first to April thirtieth. And then once it's kind of set and moving forward, we come back to council on May fifth for approval. And we send that to HUD once council approves it. Kind of a little bit of a background on CDBG. So the city's received about twenty five million dollars since we were an entitlement city in two thousand and five. The nationwide average, just kind of give you a couple of things on how cities use funds. So the nationwide average in twenty twenty four, most cities use their CDBG funding for public infrastructure. So thirty nine point oh five percent of the funds in twenty twenty four were spent on infrastructure. And then housing would be second with twenty five point four four. And then admin, some of the other categories. With economic development being typically the least used at about three point eight percent. So not necessarily unlike what the city has done. Again, we've received about twenty five million dollars in the twenty four years that we've been doing this. And about five million dollars has been spent on infrastructure and about seven million dollars has been spent on housing. So we're kind of in that same boat is what organizations are looking to do nationwide. Some of the things that I would say CDBG is and can be used for. It's CDBG, there's two ways to look at the program. CDBG is kind of a broad program. You can use it for economic development. You can use it for infrastructure. You can use it for housing and public services. So literally across the board, it covers all. And the home program is specifically just for affordable housing. So one of them is fairly restrictive. The other one allows you to do a lot more. And the CDBG process, again, it starts with public outreach, which is kind of where we're at. We've done a number of outreaches so far to the, at this point. So we've had three outreach events that we went to. Staff and I presented at the Community Services Advisory Board. We presented at Youth Council and at the Planning Commission. So we've kind of brought them up to speed with where we're at, what the process involves. There's been two public hearings to date. We had one on November thirteenth before the Human Services Collaboration at their meeting. There was another larger public meeting held on December third of twenty twenty four. At that meeting, it was a kind of a broad array of people that showed up. So we had a number of housing providers. We had a number of service providers. There was a number of government organizations, quasi-government organizations, schools, utilities. All of those organizations showed up to that meeting. Staff has reached out to a number of individuals here in the city, including the Planning Department, Public Works, Human Services and Parks. So what we were looking at specifically is kind of what we can do internally with our CDBG funds. And specifically, we looked at some of the parks improvements that are coming down the pipeline and some of the six year tip projects for road funding and so forth. And in your agenda packet, I believe it's on page thirty, some of the projects that we discussed with staff would be, one, a potential project could be Edgewater Park, which is a property that the city recently acquired. It sits on Lake Stillicum. It's a vacant piece of land right now that is looking to be developed. So I've had discussion very briefly with Mary Dodsworth, Parks Director, and we're going to sit down and discuss where that project is moving forward. But that would be a project that would qualify for CDBG funding. It's in a low income neighborhood, primarily residential. And it's a fairly secluded neighborhood and not really a project that would have any issues with CDBG funding. The other two projects that we discussed with Parks, one of them would be the Taiyi, on your map, you can see kind of at the south end, the Taiyi Elementary School. They're looking for road improvement, sidewalk improvement, street lighting and so forth. That would be a project that would take place kind of in the second half of the five year cycle. So the Edgewater would be closer to the start and Parks, or sorry, Public Works, with their work schedule right now, it's kind of busy. So they were looking at maybe twenty seven, twenty eight, somewhere in that ballpark to do road improvements. The Taiyi Park is kind of a, it's kind of a good project to look at. It's for CDBG with five hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Projects have to be kind of smaller, kind of tailor made to this is that project. It would be a very easy project. It's a really hard project for Public Works to fund because it's isolated. It's not really connected to anything. So it would be, it would be good in that sense. The other project would be up on, I believe it's eighty fourth and Pine, kind of in that area. There's another road connection improvement that Public Works is looking for funding for. And another one that's difficult for them to fund that would work well with CDBG funding, again, it's in a low income neighborhood. It's primarily residential and it would qualify for CDBG funding. So those are some of the projects that potentially staff would be looking to coordinate, assuming the council chooses to move forward with infrastructure projects. The other funding source is the Home Investment Partnership Act. So the home funds, again, we'd be looking to get somewhere in the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar range in year one. The Home Investment Partnership Act, again, home funds can be used for building affordable housing. So historically, we've used funds for Habitat for Humanity. We've used funds for homeownership center Northwest, Lhasa. Right now, we're working with both Lhasa and Habitat to build homes. Habitat's doing, I believe, eight or nine homes in Stillicum and Lhasa's doing their twenty six unit development on gravelly. So those are some projects and kind of the general uses of home funds that are typical. Depending on kind of where we're going and how things are kind of changing, it's kind of an interesting market out there. So CDBG and home funds we've used for infrastructure. We've used for housing. We've used them for single family rehabs. We used to use them for down payment. We've kind of gone away from down payment and done some other programs. And a lot of what we're focused on is housing, emergency housing, payments for people that are displaced. And all of those programs have been well prescribed and they continue to be programs that I think are going to be in demand into the future. The housing, what I would say is the housing program, as I would guess that most of you are aware, I mean, housing prices to fix construction costs, materials. I mean, all of that has kind of gone through the roof and skyrocketed. So what we used to be able to do for, say, fifty or sixty thousand dollars, we're now doing for eighty five to a hundred thousand dollars. So the programs, funding sources are, they're getting stretched. I mean, we have half a million dollars, so we can do less and less with those projects. So it's just something to be aware of. The projects that we're currently working on are in that ballpark between, say, sixty five and ninety thousand dollars. One of the things that potentially, depending on if council wants to continue that, there is, again, there's still strong demand from the community for rehab programs. But some of the things and some of the outreach, the outreaches that I've heard was potentially down payment assistance programs. It's not a program that we have done a lot of lately. I think it was primarily something that we were able to do rehabs cheaper than down payment assistance. But we're kind of getting to be on par with what it takes to do down payment assistance for someone to purchase a new home. A down payment loan for in the eighty five or ninety thousand dollar range could, in essence, do the same thing as a rehab. I mean, you put somebody into a home that already meets current codes. So it's a quicker project. It's a very easy, easy project for staff to do. Some of the things to consider when we're doing CDBG and home is obviously administration time. So projects that take a lot of staff time and a lot of effort obviously eat up a lot more admin time. So if there's less of the admin time, we can potentially do more for the community outside of the, what we would have been spending admin time on. Some of the other projects kind of that we did get some comments on would be for the home fund. We had a number of commenters who mentioned they were interested and had heard demand. A lot of them were housing providers and a lot of them service providers. And even some of the general public and some of the youth council talked about some processes where we institute a program for helping with first, last and down and deposits. Some of, basically a tenant based rental assistance program, but not monthly payments. So a lot of the individuals had said, one of the barriers that they've seen is not necessarily being able to afford rent, although that was an issue as well, but being able to get into a place. The steep curve to come up with three months rent, basically. You've got your first, last and your deposit to get in. So they're looking at five or six thousand dollars to get into a unit. So potentially that could be a use of home funds. It would be an eligible activity. The other activities, again, moving forward with home funds, I would say we continue with partnering with either Habitat or nonprofit providers to develop affordable housing, single family, those types of things, even multifamily. The hard thing is, as you're aware, the only way we can do this is through partnerships. So again, like with a Lhasa project, it's a state, federal, county, local funding organization where we get together and all kind of bring one project up. One of the things that I thought was interesting, I included in your agenda packet on page thirty eight, was we've reached out on the internet as well. So we've got a comment, or at least there's a bunch of questions to comment on. There's about fifteen or twenty questions. We've been getting a decent public response. We've had fifty seven responses so far. I think maybe sixty, actually. I think I've updated a little bit since then. But of the commenters, and none of these are really kind of earth shaking. It's the things that we asked for, what improvements does your community need most? As you would probably all expect, most affordable housing was the number one response. The number two response was better roads and street lights, street lights and sidewalks. Along with that was kind of the number three in the same category. They're kind of the same number of responses, more walkable community. So infrastructure, access to roads, sidewalks, street lighting and housing were kind of the two big ones, followed by public safety. And then, well, the other thing that I found was kind of interesting. And it may be more of a function of the demographics and who's responded. But we asked if they thought more multifamily housing or single family housing. And we actually got more responses for more single family housing to be built in the city of Lakewood so far than we have multifamily housing. So I thought those were interesting and I wanted to point those out. But that's kind of where we're at with the funding, with the CDBG and the home five year plan. Again, I just wanted to kind of give you guys a general update and then turn it over to the to the consultant, Mr. Galilin, and have him go through that with you. I did put in your agenda packets as well, some kind of, some thoughts and some ideas on what one could fund, how one could fund a project and just things to kind of be aware of as you move forward with the five year plan. Again, it's, just think of it as a general document. It's going to have all kinds of housing statistics and demographics and all kinds of information that don't necessarily focus on all of that and get into the minutia and kind of just pan back and understand that it's throwing all that in there and then just weed that out and look at it as a document that's kind of used to give you a general direction. And you, as a council, ultimately get to figure out where those funding sources go for the five year cycle as well as the twenty twenty five plan as well. So with that, do you have any questions or would you like the?
I do have a quick question to kind of kick off some discussion. So on page twenty six of your packet or page ninety four of ours, there's a map that reflects the city of Lakewood low slash moderate income summary data. It's color coded in pink. And you had indicated that possible improvements along Edgewater Park would be within that particular area. Is that right?
Correct.
But I also see that it also includes the location of the, for lack of a better term, the Bagel Block or the QFC partial property acquisition that we recently completed. Wouldn't that also be within this census tract?
Yeah, it is within the census tract, but typically HUD, when you're looking at projects, it has to be in a primarily residential area. So you're looking at the census tracker block group as well as the neighborhood or where it's being developed. So the park being developed in a commercial downtown area wouldn't necessarily fall in the residential, primarily residential zoning. So it's kind of a misnomer that, yeah, HUD, they look at the census tract and then they drill that as well. Because you can construct anywhere inside of a census tract.
Right, I was thinking about, I think the goal of the city is to have a walkable park within a quarter mile, I think, is the parameter of residential neighborhoods, which this would qualify in part. The only reason I bring it up is I know that the city of Yelm was able to develop their downtown park or set another parameters, how close it is to housing vis a vis this area. But they funded their spray park and a lot of the downtown park amenities with CDBG funds principally because there are a lot of kids in some of those neighborhoods that were drawn to that location because of the aggregation of some amenities for them. And I thought that was a fabulous use potentially of CDBG funds. But we do have, you know, potentially the road construction walkability factor that the public indicated was one of the three or four top priorities on their list. And we have the issue with Waverly that is on the tip but unfunded that could potentially benefit from some of that. Once we get Mount Tacoma Drive done, that's a safe access way for people to come, at least from that town center Colonial Plaza area and then on to Waverly to get to Edgewater Park in a safe fashion that has sidewalks, which it doesn't have now, and lighting. So I throw that out there for thought. Any other questions, Mr. Gum, Mr. Branstad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gum, I guess I just would want to start by just following up a little bit on the mayor's thought and your comments about HUD is concerned as to whether an area is primarily commercial or residential, even with it going off. But we have, and it's currently just bounced back and forth between the city council and the planning commission about taking a look particularly in the downtown areas about establishing residential target areas, which would allow for multifamily tax exemptions, even though it falls within the central business district zoning, which allows for virtually anything. But, you know, if, would the creation or a larger parcel or including an area within the residential target areas, which are designed to promote housing for, in the bands of the low income people to be able to do that, something that HUD would consider extending eligibility to where they might not if it was just a downtown.
Yeah, and that's a good question. So HUD looks at it literally as a picture in time. So now, I mean, they're looking at the demographics that we have now. If it were developed in the future and there were additional low income families that were brought to the neighborhood, then potentially in the future. then potentially in the future, a project like that could qualify depending on how much more residential units that you end up adding and the percentage of of commercial kind of, and still you're gonna have a little bit of where it's at sort of a deal. Is it is it easily accessible by those low income households or their or their sidewalks? Are there ways to get there? So it having the potential to develop additional affordable housing would not, in my opinion, affect HUD's. Um, I don't want to say it's their requirement, but it it wouldn't, it wouldn't change HUD's um decision to say yay or nay. That's that's not primarily a residential zoning. I I think they would continue with where they are until it was developed into the future and then reevaluated later. So it's a, again, it's a picture in time and funding. So if you're investing now, you're looking at the demographics now.
I I guess that that's discouraging because HUD's a federal agency, but we're we're under a lot of pressure from agencies at the state level to be look out twenty years about where housing will be. And more so than that, we've been given allocations within income bands of where we have to have housing. In fact, we 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 have the the unfortunate situation of over the past ten years, the last uh several five-year plans that uh it had been, it had been an intent to try to build housing, but also to build the 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 jobs component and economic development so that the average income of a resident in Lakewood increased. And in fact, it has has done so. Lakewood still remains having an average median income below the county average. Okay, to be able to go and do that. But in this latest iteration of assigning plan for housing and set up a housing to do that, where they created these bans of very low and low income folks to do that and told Lakewood, and you can't count the housing you already have in those bands, but all your new stuff has got to fit within these bands. That is a recipe to lower at least on in terms of percentage basis, uh where where the majority of Lakewood has in terms of a median income as opposed, the exact opposite of trying to raise the the median income up to be able to go and do that, because there's an assumption that you know, you know, Lakewood will have to take a significant percentage of low income folks, even though we already have a significant percentage of low income, low income community. Um, so you know, you know, it's 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 the 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 now view of the federal agency of HUD is in conflict with the twenty-year view of the state that is telling us to plan to be able to go and do that. And CBG dollars are dollars that we can use to make plans a reality if 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 the rules were right. Um, in that same regard, where we've talked about what could be done in going on over there, you know, one of the strategies that's looked to incrementally begin to increase of housing for low income folks is the is ADU construction. In other words, it, but I didn't read in your thing over there where if a homeowner wants to build an ADU, can they get some assistance from us if they, if it comes with a guarantee that they will rent it at an affordable rate for a specified number of years, which we which I guess we could specify to do that. But is is that kind of a program that within this five years we could could implement if we find ways to do that, whether we implement it by for some neighborhoods or to do that, but but be able to actually it's kind of like the multifamily tax exemption or where you would be able to say you've got to have this percentage of people of units going this way, but um, you know, to try to get going, you know, building an ADU is is not inexpensive, because it's like any other construction that you have to build to code to do that. But if you have a property owner that's doing that with if they're the good intent of creating an affordable rental unit for someone, or I suppose of an affordable unit that they would then maybe sell off and separate from their main house. Uh, but is that is that is that something that the way we've got the plan drafted would be something we could begin to do at somewhere within these five years?
Yeah, and that's that's actually a good question, a good point. So were we to do that, the way that we've drafted our five-year plan, say, over the last ten years, would allow us to do that. So we've got a provision in there where we can use our home funds for housing rehab or to develop affordable housing, and we keep it very generic. So the plan doesn't limit us to what developing affordable housing means. So as long as you're, as long as you put in the plan that you're looking to develop, um single family, multifamily, and then you're giving a greater target of how many units you're looking to develop over that five-year cycle. So you need to have a good idea as to kind of what what you're looking to do. You don't want to say we're gonna develop three hundred homes and you only develop twelve. I mean, it it should be based in some form of reality, but but you could do that. And the way that we put the plan together and the way that that I'm recommending to to bring the plan back to you all is broad enough where, yes, we can develop um a program that would fund ADUs um for single families. If if we were to do that, there would be an affordability covenant that would come along with that, and typically new construction for low income households is a twenty-year affordability covenant. And then there's rent restrictions as well. So there's a maximum rent that you can charge for that.
All right, and then in your report, you made a reference to and it was, I think it was in reference to home funds. But it said that the Tacoma Community Redevelopment Authority generously allows us to spend our own money. How does that work and how is this organization governed?
So the way that the home funds are set up, and I don't quote me on on the exact rule and regulation, although I should get it right, because I've looked at it forever. So in a, in a year where the home allocation, I think, is one point five um one point five billion or greater, you have to have an allocation of at least five hundred thousand dollars to qualify for home funds. Um, there's a, and there's a gigantic HUD formula on how that gets figured. So we've never really gotten to that threshold to allow the city of Lakewood to be a direct entitlement. We we are that for CDBG, but we're not that for home. We never quite got to a a large enough um allocation that would have been given to us to make us a yearly entitlement, and then we get those funds. So it really is kind of out of the, not necessarily graciousness of Tacoma's heart, but but Tacoma was uh willing to to take the city of Tacoma in as a consortium member and allow us to get those funds. Um, and they were about three and four hundred thousand dollars typically what that we were getting. Those funds go through the city of Tacoma and then come to the city of Lakewood for us to use on our our staff. The Tacoma Community Redevelopment Authority is a, there's an advisory board of, I believe, nine board members uh made up of various occupations. Um, and they direct kind of how the funding, not necessarily direct, but they're they're in charge of of making sure the funds are spent. Um, they're making sure that the programs are meeting the obligations of the the home rules and so forth. And then they approve all of the the programs and the projects that come. So the city of Lakewood in our five-year plan and in our annual action plan, we determine how we're gonna spend those home funds every year, and Tacoma includes that in their their larger plan. Uh, we then get those funds and we use them uh to spend on our Lakewood citizens for whatever projects they may be. And then those funds get recorded in the Tacoma Annual Action Plan. They report on the goals, they report on the construction, they do the monitoring of our projects. So there's some administration fees where they take ten percent of our CDBG allocation to cover those costs. So it it's not necessarily out of the goodness of their heart, but but it, were it not for the city of Tacoma, um, willing to be a consortium member with the city of Lakewood, we would not have that direct allocation.
So do they, are you, are you telling me that that technically if we had a project we wanted to fund, they could technically veto it?
No, they have, they have never done that. Um, the it's 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 not necessarily a rubber stamp. It's it's more of a here's the project we're looking to fund. Here's how it meets the rules. Here's, here's what we're gonna do in the city of Lakewood, and it's mostly a a kind of prefunctory process. We, they they approve the process or the project, and then and then we move forward and fund it, and it's up to them to ensure that their staff is monitoring and doing the required follow-ups to make sure that we're still continuing to do affordable housing for the twenty-year affordability period. So it's, I've never had in twenty years a project that they've disagreed with. The only thing that they typically want to look at is the the nice thing of having Tacoma um look at our projects is they've developed a lot more affordable housing than we have. So when I bring a project in like the Gravelly Lakes project, I mean, they they scrutinize the budget, they scrutinize kind of the the development costs. They they wanted to make sure it was reasonable. The it it's nice to have them review that because we don't do those projects all the time. So it it's it's something that that they help us with, and they've never rejected a project, not not yet. And I don't foresee that ever happening. I mean, we set up our own programs, we set up our own rules, we just have to make sure that they're in conformance with their overall general umbrella rules.
Okay, so so you say that this is an organization that's in the nature of an advisory board? Are they appointed by the Tacoma City Council?
Um, they are, appointed by the Tacoma City Council.
Okay, and have they ever offered to allow a Lakewood citizen to apply, given the geography of the where where the home funds go?
To be on the board?
Yeah.
Yeah, they, a Lakewood citizen could apply. I I don't honestly know the where the individuals that are serve on the board right now, where they live. Most of them I know work in the city of Tacoma, but I don't know exactly where they live. But a Lakewood citizen could be eligible to serve on that board.
Okay, and I guess the last thing I wanted to discuss is is the the discussion about some project, it's the second to last thing, actually, is around Taiyi Park. And 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 one of the problems with getting to Taiyi Park Elementary, whether you want to drive or walk or do that, is that there there's an entire road network um and from approaching it from 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 the west that that they're not city roads. It's it's all, it's it's a, it's a, it's a complex of where the the streets are all owned by that homeowners association being able to go and do that. And and that 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 really is a an area that would have to be a part of a of a really workable walk to schools plan to do that. But you can see CBG funds be used in a neighborhood like that, even if they're not city roads putting in sidewalks?
They could potentially. I I think the the project that Public Works would be looking at would be more of the main road getting to Taiyi Park than the than the side roads. Either either project would ultimately qualify. But uh, I believe we'd be focusing more on the, I I forget the road that drives you straight into Taiyi Park, but the the main road is one they'd be looking to do.
Okay, and at at the beginning of this current five-year plan that we're just wrapping up, one of the projects that we tried to do had to do with streetlights in a neighborhood along Phillips Road, being able to go and do that, and we 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 agreed to do that, and then and then and we ended up with people that said, we don't want improvements. Okay, um. How do we go about preventing that from happening again? Because there are some neighborhoods around the city, and and it's not just the one or two. It's it's a few that are very leery about improvements that are intended to make their neighborhood more livable for low income folks, even if they don't realize that they themselves are low income, because in in that particular neighborhood, there were a lot of folks who were 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 older and on fixed incomes and thus drove drove that down. But but how do we um get in front of that so we don't go so far down a road like we did with that other project? I mean, we even had light poles stacked up ready to go before they acquiesce to the the more vocal folks saying we don't want light poles, and we don't want streetlights and 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 unfortunately, we haven't had a had a a a public safety problem that was streetlight preventable since then. But how you, yeah, how do you go about doing that, given the way that you put projects together?
You bring up the one project that just like kills me every time we talk about that. That was the only time the city of Lakewood is was not timely in our CB, CDBG expenditure. So we had to do a workout plan and do a bunch of things. So I I don't like to have to go back. That project is torture. But uh I would say the first thing is the the project that would, if if were that a project that we're looking to do, it would be in the twenty-seven, twenty-eight timeframe. So it's at the end, not necessarily the end, but the middle end of our our funding cycle. So one, it gives us a lot of time to get out in front of that project. Um, two, if we were doing that project, it would be included in the five-year plan as a potential project, and this is what we're looking to do. Um, that plan is then available to the public. I would say if if we know of what neighborhoods or what areas we're looking to do that development, then that's something we could follow up with on both CDBG and Public Works staff and say, hey, you know what? Over the next five years, here's what we're doing. You guys are are a neighborhood of of interest that we're looking to do. Here's what the project would entail and and kind of get out in front of that a little bit more um than we did in the last cycle. The the street lighting was a project. One of the other projects that we were looking to do didn't come through, and it was kind of one of the ones that just kind of got thrown into the into the pile of, hey, we can, we can make this work instead. And I don't think there was enough time to kind of get out in front of it. So being a twenty-seven, twenty-eight project, there's, there should be ample time to get out in front of it.
Well, you know, you know, people can spread it, but but I would concerned because I do, I do, I do think that it would be nice to be able to find a way for CDBG dollars to be able to use to build the connections between the improvements we're going to make on Mount Tacoma Drive and Edgewater Park. Being able to go and do that, and and there's sort of a you know, the 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 map, the map is kind of odd where where it's maybe there's a little bit there, but I could see that we started going and saying, and we went and for that reason, we want to put in sidewalks along Waverly and then down to to be able to go and do that. I can see we then get a bunch of people who say we don't want sidewalks. And we don't want streetlights, okay?
We've already gotten the lighting coming.
And 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 going, and we and we create the same situation if we don't package it and sell it correctly, and we got, I mean, the the one in in Oakbrook, we got to the point where we already approved it, we'd already ordered paid for the stuff to be able to to go and do that. And um people were so insistent that even after we'd voted that we were gonna go forward the project, that 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 it was uh uh incumbent upon us to reconsider that and 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 go forward. And I and there's a lot of wasted energy in the planning of that um that goes on, that I just want to preclude from some doing with it in a and well, I don't know that that would, that would be something that would happen in some of the neighborhoods that are approaches to Taiyi Park. That that becomes a uh uh something that needs to be prevented with good advancements to do that. Uh, 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 no, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Laura Sella.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Gumm, first, I just wanted to thank you. You consistently are an advocate for the members of our community who need help the most, and I I really appreciate everything you've done with managing this stuff as well as our uh rental housing programs and that as well. Uh, I also appreciate, um, as you called out, uh potential area for projects being around Taiyi Park as well as off eighty-fourth and kind of that Ward's Lake Park area. Those are areas that definitely could use additional assistance. Uh, and I I think uh being purposeful and strategic in how we focus on individual areas, I think, as you've mentioned in your report uh is gonna be important so we don't get spread too thin and that we can make a lasting impact. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, members? Very thorough report, Mr. Gumm, appreciate it. Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, towards the end of your report here, it talks about housing alternatives and examples of tiny homes. Um, and this one, the Austin, I think it's part of the Tiny Home Village Austin in Austin, Texas. Uh, do you do you know? Are we hamstrung by the state's energy code requirements on the different like? Can we can we have tiny homes like this brought out to sites, you know, in in Lakewood? Or or does it require building code, you know, energy codes of today? Or or are they, you know? How are they permitted? And can we do stuff like that? Or or are we kind of at a disadvantage from other folks?
Yeah, it's well, two things. One, probably some of this, I wanted to have um Officer Mr. Gilliland follow up and go through some of his presentation. And this was would be from his presentation, but I I can kind of answer that. So it does have to meet Washington State Energy Code. Um, anybody developing affordable housing or any housing now has to meet the same Washington State Energy Code. So whether we do it or another jurisdiction does, they're going to have to meet the current energy code. Um, if they're using C D B G or home dollars, it has to meet the international. There's I forget what is I E C C. It's an energy code, another international energy code that we have to meet as well. So if you're doing affordable housing, yeah, you're going to have to meet those. And they're not they're not great. Um, energy codes kind of, in my opinion, they've they've gone a little bit too far in some of the development codes. Um, I'm running into that in some of the rehabs that I'm doing. So if you're converting a garage, say, for accessibility improvements, which we are for a couple of of families where we're adding a a bedroom and a fully accessible bathroom, you've got to meet the energy codes to to do that development. And a lot of it is changing the heating systems and changing the the water heating systems, insulating, um, all kinds of things to get you to to the credit number that you need to develop that housing. So yeah, it's it's going to be an issue in the future. Um, and ultimately, that's where we're all going. So it it ends up making the environment a better place and saving money. But it costs that much more in the in the initial phases to do it.
And and does that go for things that are permitted through L and I? Like structured, you know, where we just have to have a a foundation building permit to put it on the site, but the actual structure is, you know, per is that are they is it the same requirements for them as well?
Yeah, you're still going to have the same building requirements, the same energy, the same heating, the same plumbing, the yeah, mechanical. All of those are going to apply.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh, and I guess uh if there are no more questions, I wanted to have our consultant, James Gilliland, kind of go through the presentation. And the I'm happy to have them here. Jay Quad is out of of Plano and James can go through some with you. But it's it's nice to work with another organization. They've worked with cities all over the place, places that we haven't had consultants in years past. So it's it's I think it's a a great addition to the city to have them working for us.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, for the record, James Gillian with Jay Quad Planning Group. We're based in the Dallas metroplex uh area. I thought what today, uh Jeff's asked that I focus sort of on the planning process itself, the data that goes into establishing the need uh to uh comply with the HUD regulations, as well as some opportunities to sort of deal with local issues that are more related to what's occurring in Lakewood. So I'm going to go through a very short presentation with you and kind of walk you through some of those things. So Jeff, the presentation, do I just advance it or?
Enter.
Okay, okay. So uh I think you've received it already in advance, so I won't uh cover every line in it. Uh, as I said, we're based in Dallas, been in business since nineteen ninety four. First of all, I wanted to outline that uh this funding uh and the document that we're producing for HUD covers you for the next five years. And when the program was first established, uh there would be a five year sort of consolidated plan that would cover these three programs that are principally funded uh with HUD funds. So you have the consolidated plan, which establishes the need, the demand, and the opportunities you have. The annual action plan establishes how you want to use each of those one year increments of HUD financing. So that's your actual budget each year that's appropriated uh for your individual city. And then the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice is a separate document that documents uh any constraints, impediments, issues, even legal or uh planning issues that might be in any way impede your ability to deliver affordable housing within your community. Um, so the components are the consolidated plan, which establishes sort of the general framework. It's your need, it's your market analysis, it's your strategic plan of how you plan to use the funds over the next five years and your demonstrated need. And then the annual plan, which is how we're going to use the funding. The annual action plan is simply your appropriated amount that you receive as an eligible entitlement community each year. And that's established by HUD is a formula based type allocation. Congress appropriates uh a pool of money that's used by every eligible uh city, state, county uh organization within the city. Um, it's important to note that the consolidated planning process in this slide that you'll see in your presentation, it sort of outlines the entire process that goes into producing this five year plan. Uh, so on the left are the actual plans, planning items that have to be produced. Uh, you have to produce a citizen participation plan and carry that out in terms of developing the plan. The annual action plan is your funding for the year. The strategic plan is demonstrating your needs. And then the certifications are if we receive these funds, we'll carry out this mission in order to receive those. And then the sort of analytical components on the right, there's a housing market analysis that determines exactly where you are at this point and what you project your needs to be over the next five years. The Housing and Homeless Needs Assessment deals with those specialized issues relative to housing. So the homeless populations, those who are at risk of becoming homeless. And then again, the barriers under the analysis of impediments. There's also a monitoring requirement, so you have to produce a monitoring plan. It's how we will ensure that we're actually utilizing these funds as per the regulations. I also want to point out, though, that even though Jeff pointed out the dollar amount that you get by formula allocation each year is fairly small, HUD over the past five to 10 years has gone more to a competitive grant process. So uh the larger component of funds that come out of HUD are now allocated on the basis of competitive uh applications for funding. So beyond what you get by formula at five hundred and something thousand dollars, there are a number of activities uh that uh will allow you to compete nationally. Uh, and even in some instances with cities of your same size for specialized funding to deal with these issues. That's why the product that we produce in terms of the overall strategic plan has to cover uh a number of items that will make you eligible in the future for those competitive programs. And I'll talk a little bit about some of those. Uh, the analysis of impediments is important in that uh you must demonstrate that uh you're making every effort to make sure that people are able to access these funds and deal with the issues that they're facing. One of the most important issues is to make sure that uh as a as a one of your uses of the fund is to educate the public on uh um both uh impediments to fair housing choice, but also uh violations of the federal regulations as it relates and to report that to HUD as well. Uh, your process, as Jeff indicated, uh and you can refer to this uh sort of schedule, uh what's important is that uh uh most cities have about six months to produce their documents. And it's important uh that and because they're they have, these plans have to be submitted uh by the May fifteen twenty twenty five deadline in order for you uh to be eligible each year. So uh uh there's no wiggle room in terms of being able to produce that activities. So I want to talk a little bit about the priorities and the possibilities. And these are the same questions that you see on the screen that uh we've been discussing with the different community uh organizations that take part in being your partners uh in that program, but also with individual people. So we want to make sure that we understand uh what the housing alternatives and what the housing needs are in the community, the regulatory changes that might be needed uh in order for you to be able to uh provide affordable housing. ADUs is one of the particular issues that we're looking at and looking at best practices so that you can begin to shape your ordinances, for example, to sort of move into some of those products. And we also uh as part of the process, demonstrate best practice examples of how other cities, uh some comparable to your size, uh have really dealt with these issues. So you're not trying to uh create a solution that no one has ever tested and and doesn't broaden your uh stool uh tool chest in terms of dealing with these issues. Uh, just to give you an example of housing affordability, uh, one of the things that we look at is who needs affordable housing within your community and then make sure that both the plan and also the approach really uh is designed to address these needs. So uh these are the recorded sort of uh wages occupied by occupation in your community. Uh, and based on who qualifies within the community, you can see that there's a broad sector of your community uh that uh based on that thirty percent of income expended uh on housing and housing related activity, there are a number of people throughout your community uh that can benefit from most of the programs. So it's not just um uh people who qualify for public housing, for example, or uh assisted housing and that sort of thing. You'll see that much of the workforce in your community actually would qualify for a number of these programs. We also, in the plan, will demonstrate some alternative solutions in terms of how you could potentially look to address these issues and how that might match both uh your local community's ability to produce private sector housing that would be more affordable, but also how you could better utilize the funds that you receive as well. Uh, you mentioned ADUs and uh tiny homes is a is a real uh product that many communities are moving toward. Uh, and of course, the implications are that both you have to design a product that's affordable, uh that meets the regulations locally, but also how do you maximize sort of the ability to serve people under different circumstances? So tiny homes has become a product across the country that helps seniors, elderly, uh affordable housing, and even among youth uh who are attempting to buy their first home. Uh, this is more in line with their uh their living needs or lifestyles as well. Um, there's also, we've worked with communities across the country to sort of design housing and to make sure that we incorporate within your plan and your approach uh abilities to deal with particular issues. Uh, one of the issues in Kansas City was grandparents who are legally uh who are the legal guardians for their grandkids and raising them. So this was a particular type of housing that was designed to make it both affordable also, but also to meet the needs of grandparents who uh had legal custody and responsibility for raising and taking care of their grandkids. Part of the approach in uh the data that we collect is to look at alternatives in terms of your local market so that we make sure that both your regulations and the product that you're encouraging to be produced uh both fit your local market. Also innovations in the fact that uh not only are you able to use your block grant funds for housing, although we emphasize housing is a major component of it, but economic development issues and other social issues that you face within your community is also important. This is an example uh in Cleveland, Ohio, where a private corporation uh uh is helping the city to address housing for uh former convicted felons who are now uh re-entering uh the community, the workforce, and also the housing community. And basically, they created a product on their own uh with some funding from the city through its community development block grant funds. But this allows them to train individuals who uh who have exited the criminal justice process. Now they're on their own, they're re-entering. Uh, they train them within their uh restaurant uh business uh to be waiters, cooks, and various aspects of their culinary industry. Uh, and then they also provide jobs for those individuals uh who are re-entering. The how the city worked with them on creating a housing product that would allow those uh re-entry uh persons to be able to get housing uh while they're uh advancing in the economic uh part of their lives. So you had a discussion earlier about investment and where you can invest. Uh, one of the things that I really wanted to point out is that there are two ways in which you can expend funds or benefit uh projects within your community. One is that there's an individual benefit that's based on the individual's uh income. So as long as they're eighty percent or below the median income, uh you can provide down payment closing costs and those kinds of things directly to individuals. But there's also the investment based on an area benefit. So if fifty one percent of the persons within the households within a census tract meet your criteria of eighty percent or below the median income, then you can make an investment in that census tract. And then anyone who lives within that area or in the entire city can benefit. Example would be that if you want to invest in a park within uh the city, as long as that census tract is fifty one percent low mod, you can make that investment, but anyone, regardless of income, regardless of where they live in the city, can then benefit and, you know, take part in going to that park and and so forth. So uh that's important because we build the data that we submit to demonstrate uh need based on both individual uh income, but also uh based on uh the area benefit as well. That's important for capital improvements especially. So when you're talking about streets, alleyways, utilities, those kinds of things, it's important to uh to note that you have an opportunity there uh based on area benefit. I won't take uh any more time with the presentation you have that, but I would like to just entertain any questions or comments you have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Mr. Branstad?
You know, this is, you know, this is saying, thank you for working with us uh in terms of going through to do that. Um, and given your experience from around the country and and being able to do that, did you find any impediments that relate to Lakewood that either surprised you, that you didn't expect to 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 find here or that we would be surprised to hear?
I think the 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 major surprise is probably the degree to which many of the impediments that you have are impacting uh your community. Uh, one would be both on the cost side, which is that uh there is an affordability issue among a broad sector of your community. If you look at someone qualifying based on eighty percent of median income, you'll find that the numbers look fairly generous when you look at what eighty percent of median income you'll find that the numbers look fairly generous when you look at what 80% of median income is. But when you look at the housing price within your community, you, you know, the surprising thing was how large a component of your community are really suffering in terms of their ability to both afford affordable rental housing as well as purchase homes, particularly difficult for those who are entering the label market here and for seniors. Those are the two groups that are impacted the most. It's not necessarily a huge surprise, but it's a surprise to the extent to which so many people are impacted within the community.
So I guess that I would say that one of the things that we have is there is a tension between trying to do things to make things better for the people who live here now and planning to make things, do things for the people who aren't here yet, but will be here in 20 years. What's your advice about how we navigate that tension?
Well, part of it is that, and you'll find there's a component of your consolidated plan that we produced, which is a scientific analysis of cost of housing and how many housing units you need to produce by in certain ranges. And it's called the balanced housing model. And what we do is we project out for you over the next five years, what is the expected demand for housing, the price points of the housing that would be needed? And then what adjustments you might have to make either from a regulatory standpoint or in terms of a product standpoint in order to meet those needs? And I think you'd be fairly surprised in terms of sort of the projection of need and who will need affordable housing and what the price points will be for affordable housing over the next five years, because it's changing very rapidly. And also, it's impacting almost every segment in every area of the city. So I think the major thing is, is not only what type of housing will be produced and the affordability component, but also how does the community, and particularly the city, produce the infrastructure changes and the upgrades in infrastructure that will be necessary to accommodate those products over the next five, 10, 15 years?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Anything else? Well, thank you very much, Ray Thuram. Again, we appreciate it. It's it's a challenge to spend, you know, the limited dollars. Well, it's not a challenge. It's easy for us to spend the limited dollars, but it's a challenge to figure out how to best leverage it. So it impacts the most people, given that we have limited funds to work with. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, that concludes the items on the study session agenda for this evening. Those items that are scheduled for the February 3 regular city council meeting are on your packet sheet tonight. And so now we'll turn to reports by Mr. Cofield.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. One item and then just a quick calendar update. So the one item, and this relates to the flow of your agenda this evening. You know, your city council rules of procedures includes a section that outlines the order of business for a regular meeting, and then includes another section that outlines the order of business for a study session. However, it does not have a section outlining the order of business where you have a combined meeting like you do on the third Monday now. If council is so inclined, it would certainly be our recommendation to bring back a proposed new section to be added to your city council rules of procedure to better facilitate the flow of the meeting rather than having really two separate standalone agendas. For example, there was duplicity in a couple of items there that the city clerk had reported on earlier. So Mayor and Council, I'll defer to you on what you want to do on that, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. As it relates to your calendar, I'll just take you through the end of February, if that's okay. So this Saturday, the Washington Tacoma Korean American Association is having their 25th anniversary of Korean American Night, and that's over at the New Life Church in Tacoma. A week from Friday, no, two weeks from Friday, on February 7 at 11:30 in the morning, LASSA will be having the grand opening of their hygiene center down at their facility on Gravel Lake Drive. And if you have a desire to attend, you can certainly show up, but I think they're also looking for RSVPs and would be more than happy to do that on your behalf. The next evening on Saturday, and you saw Diana Formosa in here caring for kids, is having their annual Happy Hearts fundraising auction and dinner event at the McGavick Center. That's at 5:00 PM. We're trying to pull together a city table, but if not, that's fine as well. If you have an interest in attending, we can help facilitate that. Or if you wanted to sign up on your own, that would be fine as as well. On February 15, which is a Saturday, is the 27th Annual Asia Pacific Due Year Celebration and Opening Ceremony. And that's at the Tacoma Dome Exhibition Hall in Tacoma. And the mayor and the council, you have been extended an invitation to that. Something that's new, on Tuesday, February 18, we have a legislative meeting with Senator Conway at the state Capitol in his office from 2:30 to 3:00. So it'd be nice to have a couple of council members attend that. So if you have an interest, please let me know. On the next day, actually the next two days, on February 19 and the 20, AWC is having their annual city action days. It's no longer in Olympia. It's in Lacey at St. Martin's University. And they just came out with the registration. I know it does fill up pretty quickly. They're limited in the number of people that it can attend because the location that they're at is limited in number of folks that can be accommodated. So again, if you have an interest in attending, I did, I know AWC came out with a link or a link to their registration, but you can also let myself or the city clerk know and would be more than happy to help, help facilitate that. On Thursday evening, February 20, the Boys and Girls Club of South Buttes Sound is having their 2025 Legacy of Hope event at the Hotel Murano. On February 26, the Tacoma Pierce County Economic Development Board is having their annual meeting at the Raider Tacoma Convention Center. I know you folks are usually well represented there. If you do have an interest in attending that, if you could please let myself or the city clerk know and we can help facilitate your, 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 your registration. And then I am actually going to deviate from my promise not to extend beyond February and just put a plug in for March 8, when LMCC will be having their third annual Dr. Claudia Thomas Community Service Award Gala event. And I know that the organizers, including the deputy mayor, are looking for commitments from folks here at the city to attend that as well. So so with that, Mayor, that's my report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Cofield. Any questions? Before we turn away from Mr. Cofield to city council comments, did you have a question, Deputy Mayor? Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Cofield, we're doing an upgrade with your licensing permits and permitting to increase the speed of presenting business license and so forth. Will we be getting an update on where we are with that and what options they have available?
So we will have, Deputy Mayor, we'll have an update for you probably later this spring or early summer as we move through that process. We're going through the, kind of initializing that as we speak right now.
Okay. I had a conversation today with one of the tenants, not negative, but very positive ideas for, and I shared those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Real quick on your first topic about a brief change to the council rules of procedure to streamline the agendas. I think what effectively that would mean, it would allow me more formally to work with the city clerk and the city manager to have streamlined agenda and then formally have city manager report and council comments at the end of the second session, if you will, correct? Any objection to that? Okay, there's the consensus to move forward. Thanks. Yes, sir. Mr. Branstadter?
But on that same topic, I guess, you know, the the session with the potential franchisee for that over there in the study session seemed to go well because it benefited from there were a cluster of people around the podium being able to go and do that. And Mr. Gumm's report was almost much like a a city manager's report that might have been given at a regular meeting of being able to go and go and do that. But that I'm sensing that that us seated in this, on the dais during some things that we want to look at during study sessions, we tend to be talking with people there instead of talking with each other like it's been much what we've done in study sessions normally in the past. And that it may be that as you look at the agenda for certain study sessions, it may be that we want to have the room set up so that at the, at the time, we could move down to having the sitting down below or something that facilitates our interaction as opposed to our individual interactions with a presenter that are things that we more frequently see at, and as reports given to us at regular meetings, which is kind of what happened with the the items on the study session today were more in terms of reports rather than issues we were trying to work out and come to consensus on.
For sure. I think we treated the latter two items on the study session agenda certainly with the same intentionality and you know, robust conversation as we always have. I think the, you know, like Mr. Gumm's report and questions and responses to and from council, it was an hour for just that particular portion of the agenda. So we gave it certainly full flavor. I don't have any problem having the typical study session setup down below the dais. I think that might be fine. I don't think that's a huge problem for staff, but I'll turn to Mr. Cofield and get his feedback.
My suggestion, Mayor, would be, I mean, we can do it on a case-by-case basis, but the fact is, as part of your regular meeting, you have presentations, proclamations, and you need this space to kind of recognize.
That's true. There's the proclamations there. That's true.
So just wanted to point that out.
Maybe if it's one of those sessions where we actually have like a a map, like we sometimes do charrettes where they lay out road project designs at whatever percent they're at, we could have a table out there, not the whole setup, but we could bring a table in if need be and stand around it.
Just remind the mayor and the council that you have a standalone study session on the second Monday. So those would also be, so that's also part of our tactical approach on how we bring things forward to you as, 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 as well. So yeah, we've been having the same conversations in terms of that.
Well, good comment. We can noodle on it. It sounds like this is working just fine.
Mayor, I would like to point out that the two presentations that were presented to you this evening under the study session were not consolidated or shortened or anything. They were
They weren't.
They were presented as if it was a full study session. So I do want to point that out.
Absolutely. Okay, the only thing, you know, we may want to consider formalizing, or at least I can, a little bit of a break between the regular agenda and then the study session. So if people need to take a break, we can do that.
That's your call as the chairbearer. You can do that anytime.
I'll do that next time, especially if we have some snacks in the back conference room. Maybe that might help.
I'm sorry, Mayor, a little distorted and unclear over.
City clerk heard it loud and clear, I think. So she's on top of it. All right, very good. We'll, we'll turn to council comments then. So let's start with, let's go ahead and start with Mr. Branstadter.
I'm planning to attend the Tacoma Korean American event this Saturday. It is something that I've done in the past and I'm looking forward to that. I am just trying the best I can to follow what is sort of a rapid fire pace of both subjects and agendas that are taking place in the legislature down there that I seem to learn of a new initiative every, I knew something every week that I didn't think was going on. And unfortunately, you can't tell what you think about a proposed piece of legislation by its title. It's very, it's, 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 it's really very common, but I I, I, I did say that I really look forward to Ms. Helder's reports, which I think are sense our interests very well and looks to go, to be able to go and do that. And I'm and I'm looking to make myself available as much as I can if there's a need to where some actual testimony from an elected official would be potentially impactful. Although many of the things down there, the most potential testimony may come from highly knowledgeable staff. That I, I, I am concerned about the the homeless stay warm and dry right that, because I certainly can't see trying to tell a police officer to make a decision, does a person really need to be here to stay warm and dry or not? That, I, I, that's just not a not a winning situation to put a police officer or a, or another municipal employee in. But in any event, for whatever reason, tonight flowed well, and I was glad to see both the Kiwanis and Larry Woods get recognized both as an individual and as an organization. We've we've had years of where we've only had organizations and we've had years where we've only had individuals and and this felt right because I think we have a lot of both that are deserving of recognition. I guess it's a question of the the community foundation, just, just having the wherewithal to support and fund two awards.
Thank you. Council member Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to thank Bob Warfield for presenting the awards tonight. The Larry Saunders Award is represents everything that is right with our city. So congratulations to Larry Woods and the Kiwanis Club on receiving and designating important community resources for those funds to go to, being the H. Barn Restoration and Community and Schools of Lakewood. On the Easy Fiber presentation, as I said earlier, competition in the internet service provider space only benefits our residents. It drives down costs and improves levels of service as a competitive advantage for one side versus the other. So that's a good thing. Other than that, have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This week I have PSRC. And so I'll be attending that and report back any findings next week or following meeting, I guess. And I, I also liked the Easy Fiber presentation. I thought that was new. I've never heard of them before, but after doing some research, I'm I've never heard of them before, but after doing some research, I'm pretty excited about it. I think that it's going to open up a lot of doors for a lot of folks and businesses in Lakewood. One of the. One of the things that kind of struck me as interesting was, you know, their, their commitment to. To going, you know, underground regardless of the requirements, which is totally the opposite of all other utilities. You know, and in fact, they're striving to keep everything above ground because it's obviously cheaper. But when they, they mentioned a blue sky initiative, and I don't know if we have anything like that or if that's. You know, I, I would be kind of interested to see what we have in our codes about. You know, requiring folks to go underground when possible or, or what. You know, what, what the requirements are. We live in an area that is heavily treed and we get high winds seasonally. You know, we, I would say not routinely, but not. I, I lose power more often than I would like, I would say. So. You know, if that's something that, that would help with, with keeping power to residents, I don't know. You know, I'm sure that there's. There's pros and cons to both and, and I assume if, if, if you're requiring power companies to, you know, bury power, that it's adding fees. To the users. I mean, that's how the fees get passed along, I'm sure. But it'd be interesting to see kind of, you know, a new approach to that and, and maybe it's. Maybe it's not even worth it anymore and, you know, we're going to be moving to more localized nuclear power sources or something, you know, in the future. Who knows? So maybe it's too short sighted, but it, it was the Blue Sky Initiative that he was mentioning was kind of a, an interesting take of, you know. Not seeing power lines and just seeing trees and skies. So. That was interesting. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just saying basically what my other council members have mentioned. I'm really excited about Easy Fiber coming to Lakewood. I think it will give our residents a lot of choice, well, a different choice. And I love the less restrictions of it, and I feel like it's very accessible. For many. And then congratulations on the Larry Saunders Award, a service award to the Kiwanis Club and to Larry Woods. They both just do amazing work and I agree with Councilmember Branstad. It's nice to see a group and an individual. I've been a part of it, of the Larry Saunders Award and. And looking at them as you have before. So it's just a really wonderful. Award and I'm very, very happy and very proud for them both. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with the sentiments of the presentations tonight. It was very good, interesting, and I'm looking forward to. Seeing how that pans out. Congratulations to our Larry Saunders Award winners. I think Mr. Woods have been awesome working in this community. And I'm sure that he will still be a part of it at a distance, even if not at the realm. So good for them. Thank Mr. Cofield for mentioning the, reminding me of the March 8th event. I just want to say that I have until February 10th to get the information to my caterer. So if you want salmon, you better come.
All right.
So and if you want, if you don't, you're going to get a vegetarian or chicken.
Disaster.
So, but yeah, I appreciate, I, I'm looking forward to a wonderful evening. It's going to be really nice. I think, I think it's going to really enjoy. What we have planned for you. Things are falling together really nice and we are happy to say that our police department will have a table.
Great.
Yes. So they're showing their support for their community and that they participate. So thank you very much for that. Let's see. And I have enjoyed my time on the council. This is my 16th year. And I am going to publicly announce that I will not run for reelection. So I'll miss you guys, but. You do a good job. I'm, I'm sure.
So are we going to dance together off to the sunset?
Absolutely.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
All right, very good.
Start March 8th.
Perfect. Make sure there's salmon left for me.
Yes. So do get your information to me and to me personally. Don't go through it.
I'll get you a check for next week.
Thank you so much and thank you for supporting.
Absolutely. Well, thank you. Thank you, thank you. So. Hats off to all of you for engaging in this experiment called the joint meeting. I think it went well. Thanks to staff for putting it together. I, I think that. You know, I was really hopeful at about 7:10 that we were nearing, nearing the end. But it was a good, fully fleshed out and robust study session. So that's what we all wanted. And I think that's what tonight was indicative that we can achieve even with a combined meeting. So thank you, Mr. Cofield and Ms. Schumacher and staff for putting that together. I'll just echo the comments. I think the presentations tonight were, were great. I think the consolidated plan work was really well thought out. It's probably one of the more. Thorough reports on that, that at least I've received or recall receiving. And the Easy Fiber franchise agreement was a, a nice way to go through that with experts from the actual. Franchisee present to answer questions. So again, thanks for putting that together. Terms of activities and events, Mr. Cofield outlined many items on our calendar. I do plan to go to many of them. There is one that came up at, for JBLM. I don't know if one of you may want to go to this. It is the Armed Services. YMCA Children's Waiting Room Grand Opening. It's a ribbon cutting ceremony. This coming Monday, so next Monday at 1:00 PM on the base. Congresswoman Strickland, I think, may be there as well. So there's an invite if you'd like to go. We need to know by this Thursday so they can get base access set up for those who may wish to attend. So just let me know and or the city clerk know so we can make sure we RSVP appropriately. I may or may not be able to attend, but we, it would be great to at least have one of us there. So. Yeah, let me know on that. I will try to attend the Korean American Association meeting this Saturday. It's a lunch deal. I know the Asian Pacific New Year celebrations on the 15th. I do plan to attend that and provide some opening remarks. And then this past week. I attended a meet and greet with the new economic development board at Tacoma Pierce County CEO. Last Tuesday, it was good to hear from him. He provided just really nice, positive comments, Mr. Cofield, and working with. Ms. Newton and Lakewood staff. He's very excited about. The future and opportunities to do collaborative work on economic development fronts. And so that was always good to hear compliments about our city staff. And then I immediately raced out of there to go to the Telecom Homeowners Association meeting. We talked a little bit about that tonight. It was pretty well attended. Staff made presentations, both Martha Larkin and Tiffany Spear. And so they provided good information for the residents. We chatted a little bit about the Interconnector Road. I, I think sometimes the. The agenda for those meetings could be a little bit more formalized. Mr., you know, Larry Woods does such a fabulous job. That other neighborhood associations could kind of take that lead because, you know, we were kind of trying to wonder. Where I'd fit in after an hour, if at all, after I've been standing there, which is fine. But it would be nice to kind of formalize things a little bit more. And I know that there was an association meeting tonight. Of course, we couldn't be there because we're here. I think that was, is that the North? For SoCOM? Did somebody get a chance to go out there, staff, I hope? We don't know. So hopefully they don't feel abandoned because I wanted to get out there, but for tonight's meeting. So apologies if you're looking and wondering where we were. We were here, but we hope to see you next time for sure. And then. Friday, I'm attending the AWC Mayor's Forum. It'll be an all day affair to talk about issues of common concern, presenting all cities in the state, including HB 1380. Which is the issue to effectively sort of gut local control, in my humble opinion. Local control over issues involving the camping ordinances that many jurisdictions like Lakewood has passed. And that we believe having our own ability to manage our own local tools to do what we think is appropriate in our own communities. Should be something that's respected. And so I'm looking to coordinate feedback from Pierce County Mayors on Friday on that issue. So we'll be back in touch on that. And then finally, on the Larry Saunders Award, just, you know, wonderful again to celebrate. The contributions of so many that have served this community so well for so long. And. Those of us who worked with Larry know that his heart would have been full. Tonight, as it has been with other past awardees, but he really had a heart for service, as many of you who knew him know. And, you know, not only was he a great police chief and a public servant and a military veteran. He was just a good man and it's. An honor to be part of an organization that honors people. With his sense of service and community sort of. Love of Lakewood. And so kudos to the folks at the. Kiwanis Club and certainly to Mr. Woods for exemplifying all things Larry Saunders because he was a good, good person. So. That's it for that. Great man. I knew him well. He was a tremendous, tremendous advocate for Lakewood. Absolutely. Yeah. So anything else for the good of the order? Well, thank you all for staying here. It's 8:42. We're adjourned.